Last week it's a hundred and five and today we got the window open.
Yeah.
It's 50 some degrees overnight.
Yeah.
All righty, hold me in order, we'll approve the agenda.
Any additions or corrections?
The only thing I was wondering if we need to put drainage on here to visit about Roosevelt.
Do we want to add drainage? Put drainage, we can talk about drainage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Addition of drainage jet.
Yeah, we had a call over the weekend.
When are we putting that in there?
We'll just put it down.
Drainage, okay. If that's all, I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, approve the minutes from seven nineteen.
They're approved and they look good, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
It's just a comment to approve, I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
I was talking to her, I had her distracted.
General public concern.
I just had one comment, FYI, I've hired Nicole Neumeyer and she will start her insurance if you want it, in two weeks in my office, and Christine Flood basically has two months left, so.
Oh, good.
So, we're going good.
Excellent.
We'll cross over drainage there.
Yeah, good.
That's all I have.
Anything else for general public? We have no one out there, so we'll move on to Jan.
Oh, great, sure. Um, I have a request, you should have copied a letter from the Hope or Apple Grove Investments, they're one of our tax sale investors, and they just recently acquired quite a few parcels in Leonardmore, and this, these two, oh, I'm sorry, we're in Runway now, I'm in the wrong place, they have the main property for this house in Runway, and these are two parcels next to that, but county has the tax sale certificate on each of them from 2018, and I contacted them to ask them if they wanted to get a whole property, because nobody else probably really wants these extra lots, and they said they would, and they would pay the total tax loan of three sixty-two eighty-one on the two parcels, bring that current, and proceed with getting the tax sales deed.
I told us, just to be clear on this, so this is...
To their lot.
To their lot, and they just abandoned them, nobody's taking ownership of them. If they pay this up to date, so to speak, which is what, the three sixty-two, do they own them then?
Not until, not until they get the tax sale deed. This gives them the tax sale certificate that the county owns, and then there's a ninety day by redemption letter they have to send to anybody that has the ownership in the property, could be a lien holder, could be a mechanic's claim, anything, and the property owners, of course.
The opportunity to pay them back reward.
Right.
Yeah, that's a ninety day...
Yes, so that's ninety days before they own it, and that's always been there to protect the property owners, they...
Right.
They don't want to lose their property.
No, even though they would have, no, they're delinquent.
Yes, yes.
But more often than not, the ninety days go by and the people that do the tax certificate like this, they usually end up with it.
Especially in this case where the main property or the houses they already have, the owners have no...
This is just a, these are both their lots, just, yeah.
I don't know why they, you know, they make this up.
Everything's in order on it?
Yes.
Now, it's that company that you've mentioned, they're the ones that at their expense, they have to check to make sure there's no liens and all that stuff, right?
We don't have any expense involved, we just ask them to give them the rights to do that.
I got one question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you ever contact the cities about these properties? Because I know that my concerns sometimes are of somebody who really isn't a great landlord or whatever, start buying up all these properties, and then the city's got a problem with this individual.
It kind of depends, most of the time the city is contacting me before I even know it's a matter of...
Usually, usually they're aware.
They are very concerned, they blow it, so then they have those, that's all, the tax property, the property owners adjacent to it are complaining about the vegetation of wildlife, but they usually know about it before I do.
Was your concern, thought process, that there's people going in and buying up these properties, but are they gonna take care of the property?
That's what my concern was, that, yeah, okay, now someone else owns it, it's just still a mess.
Yeah, no, I've heard of them, complaining about it.
Pick them up and then they can take care of them, you know.
But Jan was kind of saying the city would be happy to get rid of them if someone else would take care of them, so they don't have to.
When they get abandoned, yeah, the city...
Exchanges all the ownership.
And then they'll acquire them for other needs.
Yeah, I don't know how, you know, not being in any town, if they're aware of, you know, property developers or whatever, that have been in their town, maybe, you know, something like this are just fine, and they do take care of it and like to spit things off, I mean, if the city has knowledge of what you're concerned.
That's all they have knowledge.
That's all.
So, if it doesn't know, it's a problem.
Yeah.
Good point.
I'll make a motion to assign the tax sale certificate to Apple Grove Investments. I'll second, well, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else to say about the date there? You're up, Ben.
I have four things for the agenda today, they're all change orders for our paving projects this year, they are all the incentives slash disincentives for the paving project for them staying with their PWLs, their supplement limits. All four of these are associated with their lap voids matching their field voids out on the jobs, basically the amount of air in each one of the cores that we cut out. We knew with the mix that they, that they've got, that they would have trouble matching their lap and their field voids, because the amount of man sand that was in it, and they were monitoring it, but obviously they, they missed the mark on one of them. Change order number one for farm market project, parent seventy-eight, is an incentive of five hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Do you want to go through these individually, or all of them?
No, I think, why don't you go through them and I think we could approve them as a lump sum.
Uh, change order number three for farm market, parent seventy-nine, is a disincentive of fourteen thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Farm market parent eighty is an incentive of twenty-six hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-three cents, and our local seventy-seven project was an incentive of eight hundred eleven dollars and forty-seven cents.
The two of them got relatively close.
Yes, the two of them were relatively close, one they got dinged on and one they excelled in.
So, what was, what's the PWL stand for again?
Percent within limits.
Percent within limits, and this is of the material, or something?
This is for the material that was, that was laid down, yeah. They had to meet specific requirements for the DOD that are spelled out where lap voids have to match their field voids and be in close proximity, and on one of the jobs, which parent seventy-eight, that would be the Claire Blacktop, they fought their field voids out there, they tried changing the rolling patterns, they tried multiple different things other than a full mixed design change to try and fix it. Basically, they got dinged because they didn't get it turned out.
Is this...
They had good paving days, so they're actually paving five miles a day on that, so.
Is this more of the material part of it, or is it more the, when you core it out, the structure of it?
The laying of the material down.
Yeah.
It's, it's the material that went in place, so I mean, after we've laid it, they go through the rolling pattern, and then we come through the next day and we take cores, seven core locations, at random locations throughout that day's paving. Then they take those cores back to the lab, measure them, uh, weigh them, submerge them in water, pat them dry, weigh them again, and with a formula, you figure out how many air voids you have in that pot, and that has to match what they did in the lab to prestate.
And that's all fed through the state?
Yes.
Who, who does all this lab work?
Uh, they do and we witness, so.
Now, is that, we have something that's off just a little bit from, I mean, what it's supposed to be to what it actually was?
Right.
Does that create any problems?
This, in this particular instance with, with the mix that they used, it's a softer mix, uh, just because the amount of man sand that they used, so we might get rutting a little bit sooner than what we had if it was a stiffer mix. I mean, with asphalt, you've either got a soft mix that kind of flows with traffic and you get rutting, or you get a hard mix that cracks the next year, you know.
So, if you're a little too hard and it cracks, and you move it soft, it...
It'll turn into rutting, yeah.
Okay.
All those to do on is declare one with the heavy truck.
With that?
I see with the, the Claire Blacktop in that.
With the Claire Blacktop and the heavy truck.
Heavy truck traffic with the quarry and the...
At some point, we'll see, we'll see rutting, I don't...
There isn't a whole lot you can do now, unless you tell them to take it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's a good technical, watch it.
Good explanation on it?
Yeah, do all four together.
That would be fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, and L seventy-seven.
I'll second that.
You have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Is this person gonna come for the...
Got anything else for us, Ben?
Not me.
Uh, not really, we got, uh, Hardy running up to get their truck that's been up at Clear Lake, uh, we got one machine down and four Dodge, six wheel drive on one of the John Deere, so it's down at Murphy, uh, Humboldt shop, our blade and roads and reset crosspipes, Hardy is resetting the crosspipes, and Boat is more or less demoing out their new machine, so doing some spot and hour repairs.
Getting used to it.
Yep, they're down by Bruce Boats towards the end of last week, just south Bruce's place, um, putting a new crosspipe in over there, so that should be going in today, actually. They got the outfit and everything done last Thursday, they didn't want to cut across the road there today, so they waited a couple days, that in?
Um, when is edge rutting, you know? Just approximately.
So, we've done some edge rutting.
Have you done, okay.
Yep.
Uh, what we've got now, basically, we'll be pulling in shoulders, we'll put the blade on the back of the mower tractors and then run along the gravels, and it'll pull the gravel back up to the edge of the road.
Yep, so will you be doing any more on the hard surface, edge rutting, do you have some of that to do yet before fall, or?
Not that I know of.
Oh, that adds, places that you were gonna do, that have gotten done?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the guys that had planned on doing the edge rutting actually got that done in June.
Okay.
Before the end of the year, so that went on last year's rock budget.
Okay.
Why is there a...
No, I'm just curious, I've seen some, but I didn't know what...
He rides a bicycle on Blacktops.
I can tell you how smooth they are. I'd do it for fourteen thousand, too, but, yeah, I told them that the one between Boat and Odom, as far as surface wise, is excellent. There was no rippling, there's no rippling in that, that is excellent, but, so they pretty well, unless there's a needed area there, they've done, they've applied the rock, but you're gonna go back, are you talking on hard surface?
Go back on hard surface.
With the, which is an awes- awesome deal, that's just a little blade that blades it backwards, so, saves a lot of material.
Right.
Gets it backwards, but you got a little bit to do.
We did it last spring.
Yes, that's awesome.
And pulled everything in, and then we'll do it again before fall.
Okay. No, I have not seen anything in particular, if I do, I'll let you know.
How's the mower hanging together?
First cross, we haven't had any problems.
Must have got some friction.
Good deal.
Yeah, good deal. I always wondered if we'd like to jump into drainage, we'll bend here, we got, no time to bang that up.
Yeah, sure.
That's a good idea.
Motion to go on drainage.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's move into drainage and discuss DD six.
Kim, we just added, we just added drainage to...
We're supposed to come in today.
How's some new equipment doing?
Really good, um, they run the, let's see, we got, we got the excavator on Wednesday, and we ran that all day Thursday, south of Bruce Boats place, um, they, they like it, they're still trying to get used to controls, they feel like it's a little bit of a herky-jerky, you know, that's Tom running an excavator, which he hasn't been in in probably six, seven years, so it takes some...
They'll get used to it.
Yeah. And, uh, the loader, the guy took it over to Hardy, and I've gotten a text and a phone call from Danny thanking us as far as how much easier it can be to load rock, load dirt, load sand in the wintertime, you know, you can actually, in that machine, you can actually see the top of the truck that you're loading versus, they were doing it with a loader backhoe, which is quite a bit slower.
Good.
We have the drainage, this is something to come up over, we can run it, this guy's been...
Okay.
Anyway, um, Eric Peterson is working on six out here, and they got it to Roosevelt, where was the end of his project, and, uh, pipe under Roosevelt had quite a bit of sediment in it, so typically he goes in there, there's water jetter, washes it out, so he was, he called and, uh, one of the farmers out in that area called, or sent a text to Eric and I, and, uh, went out and looked at it, and, um, there's been issues with this pipe since it was installed back in...
What year was it? Uh, two thousand six, I believe.
Two thousand six.
Older than you think, though.
Yeah, before anybody was...
June two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven.
And at that time, the pipe was installed incorrectly.
Yes.
So, with, um, roughly nine inches.
Seven.
Seven inches out of, out of level or out of fall, or whatever.
Seven inches of backfall, actually.
So, it's sloping the wrong direction. Um, I mean, it's, in the outlet end, did you check the height of that compared to like ditch bottom?
Yeah, so we, uh, when we realized that we had an issue, we went out and surveyed it, we went upstream and downstream about a thousand feet, took shots at hard bottom in both directions, plotted that out on a SL spreadsheet, and sent that off to Jacob Westergaard for independent engineer evaluation, um, calculated the area loss by it being backwards, uh, and Jacob Westergaard signed off on it that while it was unfortunate that it was installed backwards, because we bury them a foot, the seven inches of backfall shouldn't be a problem, um, we dinged the contractor about forty-seven hundred dollars for the copper installation, um, a lot of what Rick is blowing out right now in the pipe was initially created by the contractor, um, and I've got pictures, I don't have them in this folder, I've got them on the computer, but there was about eleven foot of water on the upstream side that had been dammed up while he was installing it, and when he went to cut loose the dam to allow all the water to run through, basically the dam broke. As he started excavating, there was enough water and enough pressure on the backside that it pushed the dirt and the clean rock that we had in the bottom, it pushed a lot of that material into the pipe. At the time, you could tell, because there was...
A lot of rock.
Two foot of silt in the, you know, in the ditch.
Yeah, ditch, silt.
So, when we went in the following season and actually took shots and walked through it, it was relatively smooth transition, but now that you've cleaned the upstream and downstream side of it, yeah, you've got probably a foot and a half of material in some of the pitches.
Well, part of that, which you gave a good explanation, with that dam breaking back in the day when they installed it, you know, it dumped rock and sediment right from the get-go, which obviously you never want sediment in your crosspipes, so it kind of was a problem right from the start.
I think, I think what we'll proceed with is once Rick gets all this, because there's this much sediment in there, then it, then it goes from, you know, like six inches of rock, probably fifteen inches of rock, or whatever at the other end, due to the fact that the thing is out of kilter. So, once you get it cleaned out, I, I suggest that you take shots from each end and see what that actual hard bottom is inside the pipe, because it's, it's not gonna scour clean like a box because it's rounded, so it's gonna, and it's ripple, like four inch ripples in it almost.
Yeah, the corrugation, so I mean, he doesn't have to get all of the rock out of there.
No, no, it's...
The corrugation on that pipe is two inches, I wanna say.
Oh, yeah.
So, that one inch roadstone isn't hurting anything sitting down in them ribs.
Well, it wants to blow the rib, the ribs.
Yeah.
Right, no, that's understandable, but...
The pipe will always have about six inches, even if it was perfectly laid in there, it would have a bottom of rock.
Because it's gonna catch those, those corrugations are gonna catch the sediment.
So, once he gets it cleaned out, and, uh, then we'll evaluate it and...
And we've gotten a quote from Midwest Jetting back in two thousand and seven to jet the pipe out.
But it wasn't just done any good when the ditch was hoisted.
Right.
It was, it was two grand for them to jet it out, but being that the ditch was completely hoisted.
It wasn't gonna do any good.
It wasn't gonna do any good, it was just gonna go right.
The question that was raised by landowners in the area is, you know, normally, in a
district project like this, you know, that's just part of the cost of this maintenance on that ditch.
Yeah.
And their contention was, really not the landowner's fault, that the pipe was installed wrong, that's created more of a problem than should have been, so they're curious if more of the expense of the cleanout, just the cleanout of the pipe, would go back to secondary roads.
I think the cleanout of the pipe should probably fall back on secondary roads.
Yeah, and that was...
Okay.
Construction issue that created it, in my experience in the past, contractors never cleaned out a box culvert.
No, we never used to do that, well, we never had box culverts, or...
Right, I mean, but they never cleaned under bridges either, they would clean up to the bridge, jump across, and start on the other side of the bridge and take off, they never cleaned it under the bridge, just like, never clean out a box culvert, but in this instance, the rock and the dirt is holding back water.
In fact, that it was from inception, if not from installation, and we can't throw you under the bridge, or into the box culvert, you know, and none of us had anything to do, but yet, you know, Rick and I talked, that theoretically, when that was all known, between the incorrect elevation and then the dam breaking on, and just immediately putting sediment in there, that something should have probably been done, and almost at the time, you should have said, you know, maybe you better pull this out, install it correctly and get the sediment out to the contractor back.
Yeah, we tried, yeah, this poor contractor.
Okay, well, we're familiar with that situation, but if that's the case, I'm just...
When you bid projects sometimes.
Yeah.
You gotta take the lowest bid.
But if that's the case, that was the concern brought up by the landowners in the district?
Yeah, I instructed Rick Peterson to keep track of the sign and go build correctly.
And we're hopeful that...
They're probably gonna come in and trade a work order.
Specifically to the cleaning.
So...
And once it's done and cleaned, and checked the elevations, you know, on the downstream side in particular, the hope is that it won't really cause too much of a problem for a number of years, because it would be exceedingly expensive to pull that out and redo it.
Yeah, far as I'm concerned, it's not really on the table right now.
Right, we know that, it's not, but we look at...
That's what we tell them.
No, it's not, man, that's why we said, we know it's not, so...
Yeah, in a perfect world, I'd say, yeah, rip it out, put a new one in, we'd have tons of money, but we gotta figure it out.
So, we're hopeful that the good cleaning and the ditch cleaning, that it's, it's not gonna create a problem for, you know...
So, did you put riprap or something on the east side that his text says is like three foot lower, he said, than west?
Three foot, is an exaggeration, it's...
Well, I'm just reading what he said.
Yeah, I don't...
It'd be point six tenths.
It says six, seven inches, but we're gonna check it once we're done.
And then decide to...
You know, as I told Rick Peterson, when he gets it all cleaned out, we'll take a look at it, reshoot it, document everything, so we have the correct...
Right, no, bingo, so that, that's good, what everybody kind of wanted to know, so a good deal.
Yeah, when you look at it, it looks like there's three feet of water on this end and it's six inches of water on the other end, but that's because there's a bunch of dirt inside the pipe.
Well, I drove, I drove by it this morning, I mean, the, the east side's got a nice wide six foot flat bottom, and the west side that Rick's cleaning's got about three or four foot wide with a narrow channel.
And he's looking at, he might have moved back downstream and cleaned a little deeper to make it work better.
Okay.
He's, he's gonna check the elevation of the ditch.
Perfect.
Okay, well, hopefully it'll get things straight up.
Yep, that...
I think that's all we have now.
Okay, on that one, speaking of box culvert, so, not, this is not county, this would be state, the one on DD twenty-nine, uh, I'm understanding that the DOP has taken ownership of, maybe paying for that cleanout?
Yeah.
They, they're actually taking bids for, from contractors for that.
They're ta- they're taking bids from contractors?
They're taking bids to get something in to clean it.
Okay. Is our local...
It's out of our hands now, and...
So, is it, if our local contractors, I'll mention any names, that are very good at cleaning these things, could they're, they're able to submit a bid?
Yeah, they're gonna submit a bid.
They actually met with the supervisor out of Algonquin last week, and they submitted a bid, and it's, it's just up to the state right now to determine if they will accept that bid while they're already there working, or if they want to...
Have someone else?
Yeah.
They, they will...
If there's a few that come in that are lower, they can do what they want, but yeah, they've relinquished the county.
If they won't take ownership of getting that cleaned?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna take, take care of it.
He's already there, and somebody else is gonna have to mobilize to come to do it, so I would hope that maybe...
Yeah, that was part of the permit that I had filed for, for them, and that was one of their replies was just stating, you know, they can submit the bid, and I said, well, we might as well utilize the fact that the roads are closed and there's no traffic, that doesn't matter to them.
No, no. It's a great idea, but it is theirs.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, finally, concern, well, that they get it, the process done that makes the state and the DOP happy and it gets done.
Right.
It gets done much sooner than later.
Okay, and I had, um, I had a landowner ask about crop damage, so I created, the first page I gave you is just a form that I had created, so we can compute our total acres, total amount of bushel, what your cost to plant and what your yield loss would be.
Is this on twenty-nine?
This is just a template for everybody.
Yeah, that's, yeah, this is a template for you, so if you wanna make any adjustments to that, let me know, and, um, we were asked, the, the day that Kevin Tullier was in, um, he had asked about doing a reclassification for DD twenty-nine, so I had sent the information to Colin at Boltman Bank, and he basically stated that a few of the landowners that would be right directly along that open ditch might benefit a little bit of the savings, but he specifically states, if a reclassification is done, several of the parcels adjacent to the ditch... is done, several of the parcels adjacent to the ditch would see their cost proportion reduced. However, a large number of the parcels would then in turn have their share of the total cost increased. For a vast majority of parcels for this project, the additional cost for the reclassification, he's estimating between $10,000 and $15,000 would exceed the potential savings. And however, we emphasize that the board has discretion and may order the reclassification at any time determined. But in summary, they have a strong argument can be made that the existing assessment schedule is inequitable, we do not believe it is worthwhile to reclassify D 29.
Thank you.
So they evaluated it per parcel, and they're just, they just don't think that there's cost savings. To add an additional $15,000 to that.
I like the way you stated that, you're going to spend more money than anybody would potentially.
But I just asked him to analyze that.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
That, yep, that is very good.
So I will get that information to Kevin Tullier for the follow-up, so, yeah.
That's awesome.
Please do that.
Thanks, Kim, that, and thanks to Colin for taking a look at that.
Yeah, and he had that information back in just a few days, so, that's nice.
That might not be bad when future districts, if it comes up and there's a question. It's a better debate, and I'm sure he didn't do that for free, but I doubt it.
It was a tiny bit.
Yeah, it wasn't $15,000.
No.
Versus, well, we better just reclassify it and then spend a lot of, you know, district's money and come back with, well, there wasn't anything wrong with the way it is.
Anything else in your league?
No.
Motion, where are you?
I'll second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed, or out of reach? Okay.
I have one invoice for you to review and sign, so.
I got a question for you real quick.
Yeah.
I'm a Kinley. I guess it's you I got. A little earlier than usual. Yes. So, I wanted to come, I've visited with both Eric and Sandy about a couple of potential uses of stimulus funds that local governments are receiving, and there's two kind of areas that I wanted to visit with you about, and the first one is childcare. So, before I put this together, I just want you to know that I've read the entire interim final rule covering the use of stimulus funds, I've sat in on some NACO webinars about the uses of stimulus funds that are allowable, and so, everything that I'm giving you here is, I can guarantee you, you're not going to get a call two years from now that says, no, you misused it essentially. These are, I have spent a lot of hours doing my homework on this. And so, these are, these are safe ways to use the funds. The first option, and this is the clearest cut, there is no doubt, it's in the law, it's in the interim final rule, you won't have to justify anything, there's no argument behind it that has to be made, and that is to provide wage supplements or bonuses to childcare workers. This is, this is happening in Hamilton County, though it'll be officially announced here in about a week, I think August 10th. They will be combining their stimulus funds with a private sector effort to raise the wages of childcare workers in Hamilton County. We're looking at about, well, now we're over $500,000 pledged between local government and, and local businesses that will be spread out over the next three years. So we've asked the businesses to pledge those funds, and what that allows us to do is we can use the stimulus money in the first couple of years, and then when that runs out, which is always the concern, then we have created this private sector fund that will make this all a lot more sustainable over time. Because what's the biggest concern, right? You go out and you do $100,000 in bonuses to childcare workers, we get your centers full, and then the bonus money runs out, and then two years later, you're right back where you started, right? And so I think that putting together a public-private partnership around this concept is important. I have visited with some business leaders in your community, and I'll be presenting at the Rotary Club tomorrow on this topic to see if there's not some way to form a public-private partnership similar to what we've done in Hamilton County. So, there's a long ways to go, but I'm hopeful that we may be able to assemble something very similar. So that's one option. Another option that you have is if you can show that the center was financially harmed by the coronavirus, which I'm sure we could construct that case, just about every single center did, they lost kids, they lost staff, and a lot of different things happened. And so you could, with that money, just provide them with grants to offset those losses. The one thing with that is, you know, you really would want to make sure that you can prove this case that they were negatively impacted, because that's kind of a requirement for a grant like that. A grant like that can be used to pay mortgage, payroll, just about anything as long as you're offsetting the loss. So another thing, where you guys have a new building here, this probably isn't as helpful, but what you could do, something that they're looking at in Wright County, is redoing all the HVAC systems. Even without a loss, that seems like a clear COVID-19 mitigation kind of deal, which is a clearly allowable use. With the new building, though, you just don't have a lot of those needs.
Can you use light adder purifier?
Sure.
If you were reaching that, it wasn't there before.
Exactly, yeah, you could definitely do that. Yeah, if there was a real minor HVAC upgrade where you're putting in a purifier or something like that, it would be a 100% allowable use. So, the other thing, and this is something that I really hope you'll consider, it's a low cost, is to do, is to do some consulting work there. Right now, the business model that they're operating on needs revamped, they're paying staff about $7.50 an hour, and that's one of the primary causes of the problem there, and I'll kind of dive into that a little bit, you know, next. But we, I can set us up with a consultant, depending on how much we wanted to do, it would cost $5,000 to $10,000, and we could totally revamp their business model. That's sustainable, it's easy and cheap, and I think it really needs to happen, because if you're, you know, what they've got set up may have worked four or five years ago when they were, you know, the place was a vision and not a reality, but it doesn't work in the current labor market. Obviously, we know, I guess I'm, I don't, I didn't see any signs on the way in, but in Webster City, McDonald's is at $12.50 an hour to start with, and so to compete in that labor market, we need to rethink it. So if, any questions before I continue? So if you looked at what it would take there to do a bonus, this is a bonus that we're talking about $600. In the second half of the prior fiscal year, we did $500 bonuses in Hamilton County. We did unfortunately have one center where the director had to be fired, and there were management issues, and it's not really a great example of what the program did. However, the other center in Webster City is back up to full capacity, they're operating where they'd like to be, which is around 85 or 90%, it's hard to be at 100% capacity. So they've been able to, mostly the director there thought retained staff as much as it was, recruit, you know, they're just keeping people for longer. So you can see that, where they're at right now, they serve more than 40 kids, but on any given day, that's about the number that's in there. Some kids come in the morning and leave, and then another kid comes in the afternoon, you know, but that's around where they're at on any given day, out of a capacity of 152 kids. So there, we don't need any more buildings, we need more staff, and the lack of staff is driving the issue principally because I guess it's probably the lowest paid job in town, unfortunately. And so, and then, you know, there's all kinds of downstream effects. I imagine that just about every business in Humboldt is hiring right now. There are, you know, we have a workforce shortage, and a big piece of it is because women left the labor force at disproportionately high rates during COVID-19, and they haven't been able to return because there's no childcare. And this is, we see this nationwide, statewide, countywide, over and over and over again. And so when I, when we talk about, okay, how do we get this building full, it's not a charity thing, or, oh, it's good for the kids, it's Humboldt County needs workers, and parents can't work if they don't have childcare. And, and so, you know, so that's kind of the nexus of this. You would see, for the staff that they have on hand to do these bonuses, once a quarter, which is replicating or imitating what we've done in Hamilton County, right now it would only cost about $25,000 a year. So if you think, okay, we have room for, say we want all 152 kids in there, but we've got room to do 130 kids, how many people does that pull back into the labor force, and what is that compared to $25,000 or $52,000 when it's full? And then when it's full, you know, you can start to cover your own bills and make money, and, you know what I mean, it's kind of, you've just got to get the thing functional. Right now with 40 kids, we're struggling just to cover your fixed costs, much less your operational ones. So that is, you know, that's kind of the situation there. And so, like I said, it's, if you wanted to do this, I hope you would consider it and kind of let me see how things go tomorrow at Rotary and see if we can't get a group of business leaders also kind of interested in the concept, to make this a real, genuine public-private partnership versus something that may not end up being sustainable.
Not to interrupt, but you mentioned the Rotary, and that's tomorrow at noon at, where do they hold that?
Miller's Landing.
Miller's Landing, and I know Sandy's aware of that, but that would be involve more of the business folks, if you will. I hope everyone's aware of that. So, for your similar explanation to more of the private sector to get on board with this.
Right.
And so I don't know if to get the word out, I know Erin Olson is the chairperson or whatever of that Rotary Club, and she's sent out some emails, I know, let Sandy know right away, that that would be a good informational time for them to understand, like what you're presenting to us today, so.
Yeah. You know, we're kind of trying to make a push in Humboldt County to address the situation, and what we saw, at least in Hamilton County, is that business leaders have figured out part of why they can't get staff is that they can't get childcare, and sometimes they try and recruit some kind of a talent in from somewhere else. Well, where will I send my kids? Well, there's nowhere to send your kids right now. We have a beautiful building and a waiting list, and it's, you know, unfortunately not fully utilized.
So what do you do with, I know that's for kitty cat, what do you do when you got 14 private people that do it at home, and they're going to come saying, well, do we get money? Are you going to subsidize that?
Sure. So, right now, Building Families is doing a few different things along with the state to serve in-home childcare providers. So we have a program called the Business Investment Plan, and every registered, they have to be registered to participate, they're eligible for $500 grants from us. They're also eligible now if they have a CDA or if they have some college for a program called Wages that the state rolled out with stimulus funds. You know, a lot of your, we used to pay for wages before the state took it over, and a lot of your childcare providers, Humboldt County especially, are eligible for that. So I'm sure that they'll be taking advantage of that as well. And then there is one other difference, which is that a well-run in-home daycare can make $40,000 or $50,000 a year. You know, 50 is on the high end, they're talking something exceptional, but it's not unreasonable for an in-home provider to make $35,000, $40,000 a year versus $7.50 an hour, right, in the center. And so the level of need is, is different, but there are lease supports for in-home providers, they're also receiving a monthly stipend check on top of those other things I mentioned from the Department of Human Services right now. Each one gets around $500 a month from them as well. So I would say that they are being served and their coronavirus issues are being addressed in a real way right now. But the economic model for an in-home provider is just a better one than for a childcare center because of the wage that you're, you know, it's not a wage, they're entrepreneurs, but their, their income, you know, is just higher.
And their building costs.
They're paying somewhere else.
Right, right.
So they don't have that building cost. Yep, the overhead is lower, and there's just a lot of different reasons. And it's one reason why we've tried to push that, that, you know, to get people to open their in-homes, because it's a, it doesn't require the same level of government support. I mean, every center in the three counties, this is just a reality of rural Iowa, that they don't serve, they don't, parents can't afford to pay what it takes to run and appropriately staff the place. I mean, I think, was just talking with the director over here the other day, and they need a rate increase, it's overdue, they should be able to get up to $8.50 an hour, their employees may be $9.00 an hour, but that's still not enough to compete in the labor market right now.
No, more of a compensation for the volunteer.
Right, it is, in reality, that's what it is.
Well, you end up, that person that's working over there for $7.50 an hour finds somebody that's in paying the $12, like you said, McDonald's, that's the reason they have people jumping on and off the bus, so they can't compete when they're constantly trying to fill that position, and if they don't have people there to do it, you can't have the kids come.
That's right.
It's just a downward spiral.
It's a vicious circle.
Whatever, you, yeah. So like I say, we have, we've broken that circle with a similar bonus program in Hamilton County, and we're, I'm going to sure try and do the same thing here, and I'll keep, I've visited with Sandy and Eric, and we'll keep you up to date, let you know how things go tomorrow. One thing that worked, that was important to our success in Hamilton County is, you know, I'm real good at visiting with supervisors and legislators and city council members and stuff, but when the early childhood guy goes in to ask for a donation from a business, they're kind of like, well, you know, there's all sorts of charities, and it's been great to have some partners in the business community there who can say, no, this is obviously McKinley's organization does a lot of things, and it is a 501(c)(3), but this is really a bottom line issue for employers looking for help. So if we can find a couple of, or even just one kind of champion here, I will, I think we'll be ready to really move forward. So, but I would ask you, regardless of all this, you know, trying to put together a public-private. a public-private sector initiative, I would really ask you to consider, um, let, ten-thousand dollars of the stimulus funds on consulting to get a new business plan put in place here. Have them go in, they're consultants, they'll come in, they'll go through the books, they'll revamp it, they'll figure out, you know, what the right amount of kids and which rooms, and how much you need to charge to have a more functional plan. Um, and like I say, that's a clear allowable use. Stimulus funds, you're not gonna get in trouble for that. Um, before I switch topics, any other questions or comments or things you think I should be aware of as we kind of move forward on this, this childcare project?
Well, the daycare thing, I think you're absolutely on the right track, and having previous experience with Hamilton County, something to use this real world and everything you've just explained. If you remember back in the day with this big daycare thing, I think the impetus of it, one of them was this Prestige plant, and everybody, man, it was gonna bring in tens of thousands of people, and we were gonna get, people want to come here, and, you know, if you build it, they will come. Okay? Well, I know that that really happened, but they did build this, the daycare, uh, and McKinley just went through a great presentation of the fact that there's not enough room in it, for the reasoning, and it's there. I think it needs to be brought up to speed and get it to, closer to what the, the theory of building it in the first place was.
Yeah, like you say, there's a waiting list to use it, you just gotta get it functional.
There's a huge waiting list right now. We just don't have the employees to be able to take the waiting, the waiting list of children.
Really does need to get up to what it's.
Yeah, and it's strictly a wage thing.
How long do, do review or whatever, that ten-thousand dollars, how long would it take them to put that business plan in?
Um, usually it takes a, a few months. We'd have to call, there's two contractors that I've worked with that do this. I would wanna call them and see when they could get started. Um, if they have to, you know, it's, it's a two or three-month process for them to pull it all together. Um, but if you're, if they're already busy, and then you gotta wait another month before they have time to see you, you know, but I, I think you can get it all done certainly within, and, and implemented, um, as much as you can, being short-staffed because you can't compete on the labor market, but to make the changes that they could, I think you could do that in six months. Um, but that's a pretty reasonable, reasonable timeline. It would probably be shorter as long as we didn't have to wait to get it started.
Excellent.
The, the second thing that I wanted to talk to you about, um, I talked with this about Eric and with this about Sandy a little bit, um, one of the allowable uses, um, we'll have to, it's, it's only allowable when you're serving disproportionately impacted populations, and so that could be, um, various different groups of people, people of color, in certain cases, women because they left the labor force at higher rates, um, and low-income families, and this is all an interim final rule, but one of the ways that you can serve these populations is in promoting healthy early, healthy childhood environments. Um, and so we have a program, it's called the Parent Connection, Angela Wexler Link, um, is the coordinator for that, and I, um, refer to her as the, the best, well, the best damn social worker in the building, if you can say that in front of the word supervisor. She's amazing. Um, she really does an incredible, um, job of helping parents, um, learn how to be better parents. Um, it's called, technically, people call it child abuse prevention. We kind of lean away from that, and it's parent education. Kids don't come with an instruction manual, and Angela kind of gives parents an instruction manual. She's got a number of different evidence-based curriculums that she used to help, uses to help parents manage challenging behaviors from their kids. Um, most cases of child abuse are not evil people who wanna abuse their children, it's, you know, they're struggling to deal with the difficult behavior, and they overreact. Um, and so, uh, she works with all these families. We have an increased need, and we have a lack of funding to cover kids over the age of six. Building Families gets a, a allocation from the legislature every year to serve young children, and so that's fully funded, that part of her program, but every year we have to scramble to come up with the money to serve kids six and older. Um, and we, recently, she hasn't even been able to work forty hours a week. Um, and the need is greater than ever because of the pandemic, because of the loss of social interaction and all of the different things that happen during it. Um, so I've got two potential proposals for you to help her serve additional families. Um, for three-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty dollars over each of the next three years, um, she could do a real modest expansion of the services and see four additional families here in Humboldt County. Her, her program serves Hamilton, Humboldt, Wright Counties. Um, when I visited, we proposed this to the other boards of supervisors, and each time, and like, when I talked to Sandy or about it, and when I talked to Dean Cluse, he was like, really, only thirty-six-hundred dollars, right? Well, you know, she's at, um, thirty-four, thirty-five hours a week right now, we did up to forty. Um, with this additional money, we serve the extra kids, but then she's kind of maxed out. Um, and so we did do some talking, and we, we think we've probably found a person with background in mental health, and would be a great, um, would be a great fit to do an even bigger expansion and to maybe, um, contract with this person to do additional parent education classes. Um, we think there's interest in the other three counties, so we could put together a nice package, um, and do some group, additional group classes, do some additional in-home classes, and serve an extra fifteen families instead of just four. Um, and this is an allowable use of the stimulus funds, and it just fits a moment where parents are struggling because of everything that's happened. And children's mental health has really declined. I mean, we've seen this in schools and across the area where they're referring kids, they've had multiple suicide attempts. Um, you know, it's just, it seemed to me like the right time and a fairly modest request. Um, so those are, that's, um, the two things, I guess, that I came to talk to you about. I don't know, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I got one question. So these fifty families, would that be within the three-county area?
No, that would be in Humboldt County.
With this new person?
With this new person, right. If we, if we just stick with, with what we have, we kind of, in, in all three counties, go on board with this thirty-six-hundred, and they intend to, uh, well, the, the other two are on board with the concept, you know, then we max out at that four. New person, we can really do some bigger things with.
So then who does this person report to? To you?
To me.
And then?
And then I will.
We know that we're getting fifteen families that are getting help?
So for you to do, for you to make me your contractor to carry out this work, we'll have to come up with a contract, a twenty-eight-year, you know, and so then I would give, um, what I'll do is I'll put together a report that complies with the federal, um, the federal guidelines coming out from the Department of the Treasury, that I can just give to you guys, and it, it's, it will be what you, what you need, and in there it will definitely state the number of families that we serve. We keep track with sign-in sheets, um, so.
And you currently have a waiting list for parents, for families that need to be helped, correct?
She's had a waiting list for a long time, unfortunately.
Right.
So the second program you talk about is like group education for families. Should they have success in getting some leads taken in a group thing?
So we, we have had some success. Um, one of the ways that we've done that is by collaborating with, um, community and family resources, and so they have group classes, a lot of times they're court-mandated, and so we go in with a special curriculum for parents in recovery, because recovery is one thing, and being a mom or a dad while you're doing it is a whole other layer of, um, of complications. So that's been a great way. We've also had some luck, um, working with churches to, to do that. Um, and then we also do, it's not all group-based. If we found that we couldn't get two groups done in, in Humboldt County, for example, then we would go in and do the individual in-homes. Um, it is a little bit more economically efficient to do a group, but, um, but we do regularly see people in their homes one-on-one with the same services.
And this is trying to be a proactive, wouldn't you say, program to help so we don't have issues later on, you know?
Yeah, fix problem early.
Early, before it gets to be a big problem, you know, down the road.
Bigger.
Bigger, yeah. It already is a big problem, but it, yeah.
I mean, have you been in, so it's, uh, Hamilton and Wright, of course, the other two counties, uh, not to speak for them, but have they, have you given them enough information that they are leaning towards the higher amount, the thirteen-thousand, six-forty, uh, to be able to get?
I think that, I'm, I'm.
You're getting, you gotta be talking to them enough.
Only in the newspaper.
No, don't worry about the newspaper.
No, our guy would never do that.
He'd never do that. But I mean, it, it is, but. I like what Sandy said, it is proactive. It is, this is not our county's taxpayer's money. This is obviously everybody's federal tax credit, but they're going out, this is allowable use, it is a needed, uh, program, it's, it's implementable. Sandy and I probably know a little more of the details of how McKinley would do it, and I know he'd explain it to, to everybody, but, uh, I just think that that, it makes a lot of sense. And you said of the timing and everything, and it's just, and the fact that we could commit to thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty dollars over a year, over three years, and we get this money, it just is a no-brainer to me.
I, I agree. I mean, you just look at the issues that the, um, middle school had at the end of last year. I mean, tragic. And if there's something we can do to help that, I just feel that we really need to, to do that. We really need to look at how we can help our, our citizens here in the county.
And it, Rick even said it, that if you can, and that's, I've been on this board for a long time, but it's, it's early childhood, and the sooner you can address something, the better. And it's, that's great, but it's, it's based on from birth to five years and building families. What Angela does, yeah, that's fine, there's money there, but when you go to a little bit older, which they need the things, the in-home, the group, for the little bit older kids, this is money to help that, and maybe get another person on board, at least for the interim of three years. It, it would be a great service, and a needed, needed one to get more of it out there.
I don't have a problem with it, as long as we know that there are fifteen families in Humboldt County are getting helped.
Extra.
If we put the money in it and it works, everybody's happy. If we don't see that it's helping, I guess that.
Right. And, and we wouldn't, I, it says in there, three years. Honestly, the, the person we're, we would contract with to do this had said, well, I, I can commit to one, and, you know, what happens three years from now is a stretch. So it would be something where we would come back after each year and say, okay, here's the report, you can give this to the federal government, this is what we accomplished or been had accomplished, so we certainly would, you know, if, if it works, it works, and if it doesn't, then, you know, you'll have twenty-six thousand dollars to spend somewhere else the year after that, right?
Well, the guy sitting next to you, when he comes in, he's buying a new payloader, he's buying a new motor patrol and the dump truck or whatever it is, we can say, well, it's running up and down the road, and it's worked, it's held all the stuff we wanted at the home. With you, you come in and say, well, we had twelve kids, twelve families, whatever that number is, we aren't gonna see the long-term effect for a long time, but you hope the money that you put into it does the same thing as Ben's request.
Keeps your jail not quite as full.
First aid of a key young person, stop right fast.
Right.
Money's all worth that. And the thing is, this money, this isn't, unfortunately, they didn't give us carte blanche with this stimulus money to buy dump trucks and motor graders. It has to be specific. This is a specific program. The daycare, everything McKinley's presented is allowable use, and I like what he stated, this is allowable use, but two or three years down the road, we don't get an audit and say, oh, you gotta pay that back.
Right.
No, this is all usable money from the American Rescue Plan funds, and it's where you can make good use of that money.
And if you, for example, numbers, I had total of, it's about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand over three years.
Yeah.
When you lump it all, the daycare and this, and it's just, it puts that number in your head.
But it's allowable use, money of the, what is it, one-point-two that you could potentially get?
Eight, one-point-eight, little over one-point-eight.
Yeah, but there, again, there's strings attached. These are some of the strengths that attach it.
It's a category. You know, I think it, it might even help, um, I'm probably making my life harder here in one way, but hopefully more effective. You know, if you did consider this bonus program, and you said this is a match to, you know, we, we want the business community and private citizens, we know that we can't, you know, we need help to have this be sustainable, so we want this commitment, um, you know, uh, anyhow, that's a thought to consider if, if you were to proceed in that fashion. So as we, you know, and, and so then we go from, okay, well, this lasts for three years, and we have five or six years here, to show that it works.
And yet, hopefully the businesses can see then that, yes, it's a good investment for them.
Exactly, that we can come back and say, I mean, is he, you know, there are people, you know, we're talking about, so fifty-two thousand dollars a year if everything is firing on all cylinders. That's one, if that's what a business loses of not having, you know, one key person or two people on the line, I mean, that's lost productivity, like, so when we think about it in that way, um, hopefully, you know, we can, we can, number one, get things turned around there, get more kids in the building, track that, just, you know, show that both to you and to anyone else that invests in it, that, look, we're serving forty more kids than we were when we started, and brought, you know, ten new parents into the workforce, or fifteen, or whatever it is.
And helps off the businesses in towns that have employees, they, their doors open.
Right, yes, and they're, they're struggling with that.
They are, I mean.
Struggling everywhere, always, everywhere.
Everywhere you look, it's help wanted. You look in, I mean, the paper, I mean, we even had that many help wanted ads in the paper for years.
Well, this, this is awesome. I would suspect that with the parent edu, you know, education proposal, that would be you to put that and get that to us, to what we need to do, and the other two counties involved.
Right.
To get that up and running.
Just, so, um, the, I know the state auditor is involved in everything that you're, well, anyhow, but I guess I would need some assistance in putting together, does it need to be a twenty-eight-year agreement?
I'm sure it's. I mean, we cannot give out county funds without it.
Without it. And so, um, if you have like a template or something of that, I could plug in, you know, I contract with People for Services all the time, so I can plug that in, but I guess I've never made a twenty-eight-year agreement, so I'd like to see if, if someone could share with me a format, and then I could kind of.
That's what I was gonna say, the county attorney, yeah.
Um, because we would, we would wanna get that contract or twenty-eight-year agreement put together, um, and I'd be happy to pull together the conditions and what we, the services we intended to deliver, just kind of give a format for it. Um, and, um, but yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, we, that twenty-eight-year agreement shouldn't be that difficult. We have that lots of things, and I think on the daycare, obviously, you think you know your contact person. I don't like to point fingers, but she's sitting right over there.
But we'd need, we'd also need to do a resolution, 'cause anything that we use the, the funds for, we have to do a resolution too. So we do a resolution and the twenty-eight-year agreement is how we'd have to do that.
And I would also, if you're interested, I know the, the bonus fund, we gotta get a few more pieces in place, but if you're interested, I could put together something between, um, you and Kitty Cats, and I, I don't think Building Families needs to be in the contract. Uh, I could, if you wanted me to, to just ensure that it's all facilitated, but, um, to get that consulting piece put together to rebuild their business model. But, um, to get that consulting piece put together to revitalize their business model. Um, and if, if that's also something that you're interested in. And that can happen and will be helpful and sustainable whether this bonus can come together or not.
Mm-huh.
I think that's awesome. I know, as well, McKinley's been really helpful to me, understanding this, and he kind of ran this by me, and then I said, um, now everyone's heard it. I think it's just a, helps get your mind around the, the uses of these, uh, American Rescue Plan funds. I really appreciate that.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Who should I coordinate with on the, to get the paperwork in place?
Well, the, well, twenty-eighty, we should, we have twenty-eighty agreements with a lot of you.
I'm guessing it would be probably two issues.
Yeah, that's what I...
All right.
All right.
Okay. I will, will be in touch then. Um, you sent me an email just the other day, so I know how to get hold of you. You can't escape me anymore.
Ah! That sounds good.
Let's kind of have one of the funds run out.
Well, the whole thing is we hope, and this is kind of what we've been talking about in our Kitty Cat daycare, you know, we're hoping that if we can get past this hard era right now, that we can get enough people in, we can get our wages there, we can start charging up, that we'll be sustainable. You know, it's, it's, right now, it's just, first, we gotta be able to get employees and to be able to get the waitlist in. And then, you know...
You've got the room, you've got, and you don't have employees to cover it. You've got the American Rescue Plan to start this year's wages. What are you gonna do in next year, the year after, the year after? And you don't have the rescue plans. You can't pay them?
Right, well, look, this will be three years, it would give us, you know, that one, I mean, we're hoping, like I said, once we get into an area where we can get the quantities of children up, we have our workers, we're working on how, what we need to charge, and that's kind of what McKinley was talking about with that business plan.
Yeah.
You know, working with our current board and seeing where can we, what can we charge? You know, how much more can we go up? What is able for parents to be able to afford? You know, we've gotta be reasonable with that, too. But hopefully, if we can get there, and the other thing is, we're gonna be working with more of a, um, after-the-school program, so there'll be more kids. We lose money on infants, we, we, um, make a profit on the older kids, 'cause you don't have to have the amount of workers. What is it, one, one worker to fifteen?
Fifteen.
I think it is one to fif-
It goes from one to four with an infant to one to fifteen with school-aged kids.
School-aged kids, so that's what we're, you know, and that's what we're trying to work on, is to get those older kids to where you don't have to have as many, you know, but yet still be able to provide services for those infants. 'Cause we have, I think, seven infants on the waitlist, I think, something like, I don't have my papers in front of me, but it's something...
That's the biggest shortage across the state, because it's a money loser.
Right.
Every infant that you care for in every childcare center or even in homes.
In homes.
Inter...
They gotta follow the same guidelines.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, and so, it's just a, it's a challenge, and you need those older kids to subsidize the younger kids. You know, we were just visiting with the director the other day, we were talking about some real simple things. If you can get high schoolers to come in and work with those older kids, they get off school at the same time, they come to the center, right, and, you know, so anyhow, there's different things that we can work on. But ultimately, they should be able to, to charge what it takes to pay, I think, a dollar and a half hour more starting wage without trouble. And then after that is, you know, we have to get the business community involved. They're the biggest spending factors of a function of the childcare system.
Go to the Rotary meeting tomorrow. Because, yeah, that, don't lose sight of what McKinley's been working on with the business investment.
It's a joint, joint effort, it really is. But it was a joint effort to get the daycare even started. You know, there was a lot of businesses that did donations for that just to get it started, and so we just need some continued help that way.
Along with just one third of the, the way that thing was put together, wasn't the city involved in that, and the hospital?
Hospital.
So do they have to put, are they, are we just the ones that got the funds, so we're the ones that are spending, the people have their hand open?
Sandy was thinking about putting together a meeting with the city and the hospital. Um, for example, in, in Hamilton County, um, the, last year, the supervisors did twenty thousand, the city did twenty-five. This year, um, the supervisors are gonna do, well, they're gonna do two hundred thousand, please don't put this in the paper, they wanna have their big announcement, um, next week. Um, but they'll do two hundred thousand of stimulus funds over the next, um, the next three years. And the city is talking about, I think they were talking about twenty thousand each year. And I think they also intend to use their stimulus funds. Um, but that, what we're doing is we're raising this money from the private sector. They're still contributing everything that they pledged. That's going into a bank account. And when the stimulus money runs out, we'll keep going back, and, and the county and the city know that they're still probably on the hook even after the stimulus funds, if we wanna keep the thing going. But a much more modest, you know, we're ten, we're back to that ten or twenty thousand dollars a year versus a hundred thousand.
On the other side is that we already have the building. I mean, it's there, so it, the only other thing we can do is close it.
Right.
And you don't wanna do that one, it's...
No.
The facility is the way it is, so, and the need, yeah, so we just...
All right. So, um, do you, is there any thoughts here, if they wanna put this on the agenda next week? Approval, or you wanna sort of a meeting, any of us can on Tuesday? Just, we should have a case for suggestions.
I would, I would say that we need to, for one thing, get, um, John Beatty involved, you know, before we actually put it on a, for an approval type thing, give him some input in as far as, you know, twenty-eighty, um, things like that. But I think we, as many of us, I'll be there tomorrow for the Rotary meeting. Um, and, but I do think we should...
And we should have a conversation with these other two counties to make sure that they're all, everybody's all in or whatever.
Right, right. And I'll, so I will be doing a similar, well, a presentation to Wright County. Um, they're a little bit of a different animal because of the three towns, you know, anyhow. So we have kind of a different solution that we're working on for them there. But I'll be present, doing a similar presentation there next Monday, so should have a good...
I thought you were referring to their board members. They're kind of a different animal, too.
Three totally different personalities.
And you can print that.
Well, I'm not in there, that is very true statement. In the meantime of this, that you find the applicable twenty-eighty agreement, you know, template is what McKinley's looking for to get that put together, um, I would say certainly, I like your expedience, very, sooner than later, because I, I mean, I think it's just some technicalities, but you wanna get this up and running, especially with the, you know, Angela's...
They're gonna get with Wright next, um, Monday, I would say the twenty-third.
And then we have to get that previous planned.
Yep, wouldn't you say maybe August twenty-third, get it on, that'd give us two full weeks.
And if there's any questions back and forth, that would be...
Does that, does that sound...
Sounds about right, but if there's any...
Everybody, so we can get, get things rolling and get things...
You may have something that you could relay back, even to the auditor, that, that you would know about in the next week or two. And then she can, we'd have the twenty-eighty agreement. I think, yeah, I think a couple of weeks, we should be able to get it implemented.
I think so.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Ken.
So this is Doug's son?
Yes, I was just gonna tell you guys, this is Doug's son.
I keep looking at him, he has the same manner.
That is Doug Bailey's son.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you guys that, that is... Well, don't say that, I was talking to him and I didn't either.
We gotta try to help you out.
Finally, dog, and I asked him, are you so good?
I kept looking at him.
McKinley actually served in Iowa Legislature, uh, several years ago, representative, uh, for, I think, maybe just one term. And I think got married and had kids and stuff, and got out of that, and he's been with Building Families about five years now.
I think he switched right after you and I, you took that position, he left.
I think that's about when he started, yeah, and he does an awesome job with this. It's a lot of bureaucracy.
Like his dad.
Yeah, does an awesome job.
Yeah, well, he was...
Had a lot of conversations when I get together.
Yeah.
All right, well, we're down to committee reports.
Okay, well, we had a busy week for, um...
Yes, you did.
On Tuesday, I met, uh, I did the phone with the ministerial board, um, in preparation for the moving of the Edmo facilities, food pantry facility. So we got all that straightened out, and then Thursday morning, we were gonna start at eight-thirty. Well, I'm an early riser, so, and I got assigned, I had the trailer, so I went up there and I started loading. They had everything pretty much boxed up, up the secondary roads, and I got there at about six-thirty and started moving some stuff out, and ended up, uh, we had everything moved out of there, basically, other than Ben's still holding a couple of shelves for us. Um, but we were done up there by eight-thirty and went and dumped it down at the new facility. Then we came up here and, um, started the track of three floors. But we had, I think she said there was thirty-one, um, people that were signed up, plus, she said, five or six more. Um, we had everything off the third floor and into the trailer and down into that building by ten-thirty.
Wow, very good.
So, um, it was one of those deals that, it was hotter than Hades. I looked like I'd been in the swimming pool. Um, but we had people upstairs that were shoving it in the elevator. We even had the sheriff down at the bottom of the, in the basement, and he was helping pull the stuff out, and then we put it in the trailer, and then we took two, two and a half trailers from up there down there. But, long story short, there was about thirty-five, thirty-six people that helped. Um, it was an awesome group of, I mean, age-wise, we had two kids from Esteville that got pulled in 'cause their mom works for Edmo. They got told, you're coming down. And there was some other, a couple other kids from Gretna, they got the same thing, but it all is moved. Hopefully, this morning, they opened up at whatever time they opened, but that is, I think it's gonna be a huge asset for the, the county, um, four days a week, that thing's gonna be open. They are looking for some, a few more things as far as some, well, they'd like to have a conference table, um, so they can have meetings in there. Um, they're also looking for some office, or not office furniture, but like lounge furniture, they could sit out in that area. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks, they're gonna have a little, uh, kind of a grand opening. Um, they got everything in the back, the freezers, the, I mean, it's just a huge improvement over what they've had, so... I can't thank all of the people, and I mean to tell you, there was, and I'm not, well, there's nobody in here to report, but there's eighty-year-old people there that were helping wipe the shelves down. They just, uh, just like old school, you know, they were, this is the way we do it, and this, and for a small town, I couldn't believe how, how, how it went, so... And then, uh, Thursday, I, uh, had my CFR meeting down in Webster City. We are, uh, let's see, March, April, May, June, July, August, we're about four and a half months into the deal with Flips, uh, Iowa City and Des Moines, um, that we are managing. We, as in CFR, are managing those two facilities, um, with an eighteen-month review as to what things are, how it's gonna go. If we're gonna merge, if we're gonna take it over, if we're gonna hand it back to them. But things are finally turning, it's Prelude is the name of the two facilities. But things are finally turning around. Michelle and her crew are doing an awesome job trying to put things that we do down in Fort Dodge and Webster, or in, uh, Webster City and Ames. So it's been a huge transition. That group is going down to Des Moines and down to Iowa City to help do that. And so our meetings have just, like, now we have double the stuff to go over because we're going over three different businesses, but...
That's good, though.
Yeah.
I mean, that's very exciting.
Also one of those things that, you know, for the Des Moines area and the Iowa City area, if they close those, would close those two facilities, everybody else in the state that has a facility is gonna be affected, because then they prioritize. If someone needs to go in for treatment, they go to the top of the list. So all of a sudden, the major stuff is gonna get moved to different...
Yeah.
So they are getting, it's, it's a huge undertaking, but they're making progress, so it was a busy week. That's it.
Good for you. I did not have one thing last week. I know it's a first.
I'm gonna write that down.
Yeah. Tuesday, I had a VA meeting, three times, one thing I had.
I did not have anything last week, but I will go back to, uh, Wednesday, July twenty-first. That evening, we had a nine-one-one service board meeting here at magistrate's courtroom. That was what I had a week ago, whatever week ago.
There was a Humboldt County housing meeting, I, I got there late, so I just got to the end of it. And I think it was Wednesday, and, um, that was the building trades house, I had an offer and they accepted it. And the rehab, I was good on Ninth Street.
Ninth Street?
Oh, good.
Perfect.
So hopefully, everything falls through like it should, that, that'll be sold, so that was good news.
And they're doing another rehab, aren't they?
Yes, they actually got two in the works. They got one for this year and one already purchased for next year.
Wow, very good.
They bought the second one early so they could get some of the sewer work done that needs to be done on the property.
That makes sense.
Uh, so we'll be ready for them, and that way they have a plan. The community seems to like that better, and it's good news for the kids. They, they get more hands-on experience that way, I think.
And building one, yeah, he said that. Well, that's good.
I know, it's great, yeah.
And it gets back to our tax sale questions. I mean, can they revitalize something?
Yeah, and, and that's what they're doing, you know, they're taking one that, an eyesore in, in the area and cleaning them up.
That's excellent.
Dang, it's great.
Yeah, it really is. Bruce, I hope that the CFR stuff, so they're just doing a study, more or less, to see if these...
No, they're physically running, we are in charge of the operation of both.
See that in the X amount of time that these centers get back on their own?
Well, the board...
On themselves or all the CFR...
The board, we gave them eighteen months to say, we can make this thing work, or we can't make this thing work. That was the board's...
The board, if it works, it will be...
Stay functional?
But CFR will continue to run the other...
Well, if they, unless they decide they wanna do it themselves, that they can, they've changed things enough that they can change their operations.
They could possibly be on their own again.
So is it, is mainly financial problems they're having, or is...
Well, it's just the same thing that, you know, every, anybody that's in medical, the billing, you know, you send something in for insurance, and then it doesn't get paid, and then they don't, they don't stay after it, you know, you gotta resubmit it according to the way they wanted it submitted, so that you get paid. Well, they weren't doing that. And all of a sudden, you're thousands and thousands in the hole.
Right, you don't get paid.
Yep, it gets kicked out, and then it comes back, and well, why didn't it get, well, then you gotta get back on the phone and trying to talk to anybody in medical. It's just a mess, so...
It's a huge issue.
They're, they're working, our, I say our, the CFR people are down there, um, helping. It's like taking apart their whole business plan... It's like taking apart their whole business plan and then redoing it the way we've had success in Fort Dodge. And Michelle and, and that group of team, or their team has worked pretty hard at getting it put back together and they're starting to show positive signs, so.
Michelle is amazing.
She is a.
I mean, she's just has such a brain for it and a passion for it.
And that's her, that's the passion is the huge thing, so.
Her knowledge is unbelievable.
So it's interesting, it's a, sometimes you think, "Why'd I yell that I get on this board?"
I know that feeling.
And then the next time it's like, "Wow, that's really cool," but, you know. And we're trying to get, you know, that's the other thing, they're dealing with COVID down there, so now when you're dealing with substance abuse people, um, you can't really have a whole lot of interaction with family, you know, because they can't bring people into counseling, they can't bring, so they have to find, there's a fine line and, so anyway, slowly but surely.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us, Trish?
Uh, oops. Yep, I did. Um, I received an email last week from the Office of Chief Information Officer and it was passed on by ISAC and there it says, "Through the CARES program, Coronavirus Relief." It's offering up to ninety-five hundred dollars for laptops to enable people to work from home and remotely in case that happens again. I've kinda reached out to some of the offices here and need to check with Ben to see if you would be interested in one.
I don't know how I control, you know, the eighteen guys if I'm not at the office.
And, and it's, I don't know.
You can't turn your computer like this and say, "I can't see you very well."
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's out there and there's a lot of tracking.
Maybe we could get us all new computers.
If you want them.
I think it's about time.
If something that works, that would be good.
Because of the fact, while we use our computers, it would be nice to if they worked. Mine hanging in, but everybody else seems to have crapped out.
Mine works, but I just have to leave it plugged in all the time 'cause the battery is unplugged.
I don't take it with me, but I would suggest that you provide the supervisors with brand-new computers. So that we can all have that and do you use yours?
I use my personal computer.
With your county email?
With my county email.
Thank you for keeping me and getting my mind right. But so no one, yours?
There's only certain ones, um...
So I, that's my suggestion. If that's money that you can use it for.
Yep.
You have to.
I checked with solutions on the recommendations and, you know, they kinda recommend it.
What about other offices that are there? Is there interest in?
Um, yeah.
I mean, I guess my question would be for, let's say Diane or Jana or, uh, Linda, would it be feasible to have each office have one or two? That if someone went home, they could use that? If someone got sick or, I, I don't know, I'm gonna get that.
And the capability of having, you know, a computer to be able to do Zoom or whatever training. 'Cause I know a lot of the times they'll come in here and hook it up to the home wall.
Which say, by all rights, if they have something and there's capability in here, you know, this room isn't being used, use it.
But for us, on these extracurricular boards that we serve on, unfortunately, who's to say about Zoom meetings down the road so that we have a functional Zoom-capable computer that works?
Well, Edno gave me one and I said, "I don't need another." I've got one for the, my personal, one for the county and I don't need a Edno special one, so I turned that back into them, just to...
Are you interested?
I, I mean, I still use my personal one, unless that's an issue that I use my personal one.
Only if you're her company. That became an issue with her, so.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I mean, the only thing I get into is Zoom and, and my emails. I mean, it isn't like I'm in, in the server of.
You're not into stuff where they could hack you and get in?
Yes, get into the county server or something like that. I just use it for my Zoom meetings and, like I said, my county email.
And on your comments before about being able to co-carry into the network and that here, you can do that. And how about you, Ruth?
Yeah, 'cause I wanna, that's the junk.
So I don't know, do you want me to go according to the recommendations of solutions?
Well, those are the ones you're gonna correct if we have a problem, right?
I hope so.
I think they'll give you the correct specifications. They'll know what, what you would need.
Well, you know, my computer knowledge, I'm like a whiz on it, so it don't make any difference.
Practically a programmer.
Yep.
I can bring one of my grandkids up and have him help.
Okay, um...
You sound like Leon this morning, we were trying to get air conditioners again.
I spoke with Ms. Dawson. He was actually in the hallway after the meeting last week and he said he would do one for that one for the same cost as he done the other one if we wanna get it done.
How about we have, will he come and look at the one and Diane said hers is, she's a hole in the valve where she, it'll freeze up once in a mile. She's concerned about that, so. That's one and then the hallway one? It is a outlet tube or whatever.
The hallway one only needs a drain tube fitted.
Right.
You can't get the part, but if you're replacing other units that have the same part, they can swap that part 'cause it works fine, but it doesn't, the drain tube is busted.
So is it all right to have them look at that? While they're doing it?
Well, if it doesn't work, it doesn't do us any good to have people up here.
Get it fixed?
Yeah. They do work with a lot of those split jobby air conditioner things, so.
But if we can salvage the parts off the ones we're replacing to fix that one.
Or another one, or maybe the one, the maintenance needed. They do need sometimes just a good cleaning.
Yeah, and Arturo has been doing that.
Perfect.
There's filters in those units that.
And then be cleaned up periodically to make them work better.
And we had a real, back to our move on Wednesday, when we were moving upstairs, Arturo, he had a hard time. He was wanting to help really bad. And he saw all of us old people and he'd go running over there and take something out and it's like, "Arturo, you probably should be doing..." He is unbelievable. We ended up taking his cart, we were so, we ended up, we got it back to him, but he brought his third cart out 'cause trying to move four filing cabinets and. I slept well there the Wednesday, you know.
I bet you did.
It did work.
Now we got a bunch of empty space up there.
Yeah, we have an empty, empty office up there and Ben has a empty room out there, so. Almost empty. We got like, what, six shelves? We're trying to finagle.
Would be, be wise to put nine-one-one up in the office and redo that basement till we get equipment out of them here?
Possibly.
Yeah, um, that probably wouldn't be so bad. I was wondering about, is there, I have not been up to the Edno area. Is there a conference room, conference-type room up there that could be utilized for meetings and stuff? I know a lot of times, you know, we have hard time finding places for people to meet. Um, just even between.
Court.
Court and even they wanna utilize things too.
Well, just inside the door, there's two, one small, like a reception office and then there's another office to the north. Then if you walk straight through, then there's a.
There's like three offices.
Very big office in there that could be used if we had a table or something up there. But if you put someone else's office in there, I doubt if they're gonna want a conference room on the back side.
So you have to go through everything?
Yeah.
Now, what about community services? They don't utilize all that space now, do they? Or do they?
I don't know.
I don't know how that, maybe that's a whole east suite.
Whole end of the building, yeah.
Well, Kathy will still need her area and, um, for, um, service coordinator will, you know, we'd need a room for that. Whether they'd need the whole thing, maybe split-floppy, 'cause there is a, I think a conference room up there.
Yeah, the old jail area.
I think there's a conference. Yeah, I'm not very good with directions. You know, so that might, maybe that's something, maybe just, maybe we do need to look at where all the spaces are. Maybe we need to do some, you know, adjusting with.
And that's right, the elevator opens up and it's right there, so if you had a handicap issue, you could be right by the door.
And even with that, you know, you had to take that and split it, 'cause there's two entrances, correct, on the community service?
Yeah.
One could be a nine-one-one.
Yeah, it's right there. It's right doors.
One over here and one over there, isn't it?
I think so.
Am I thinking right?
One off the elevator right here and there's one right around the corner.
Right, as a door, yeah.
I'm just trying to, there's a lot of wasted space.
Yeah, probably. Could be used better.
Yeah, we just need to think about what we wanna do.
And, um, what do you think on the ARP as far as hiring a grant manager?
I think, personally, I think we need to do it. Um, I know Webster's doing it. Um, I'm pretty sure Wright is. I don't think Pocahontas, but I talked to Bob though and they have somebody that, um, used to work with their public health and did a lot of grant writing and things like that and they're, they're gonna be working part-time for them. I did ask Bob if he would give me the information on this person, so maybe we could do a share thing?
Sure, yeah.
You know?
Paying hourly type thing.
Correct, and that's, that's what they're gonna, he hasn't got, he hasn't sent it to me yet, but I know he will and, um...
Do we wanna put something on the agenda for that?
You're talking about someone to sort through what and where you can spend this ARP money?
Yep. That would man, the other thing I was thinking of and I don't know even if Peggy would want to do this, she's very good at researching things and, and that, maybe that might be a.
But she never wrote grants.
But this is, you're saying grants, are you talking?
Well, I'm just, no, you don't have to write grants for this.
You just have to make sure that what you.
Are you out for grants or are you talking through this?
For ARP.
For the ARP.
Yeah.
I just, I just. Yes, right. They, they just have to have knowledge of it and that's why, I mean, I'm, all I mentioned that this gal had grant writing experience, so she has a lot of management experience as far as how to manage them and that, you know, and things like that.
Yeah, but this is for people to look at, like what, we have McKinley.
Like McKinley did, you know.
Explain, okay, this is something that.
Make sure that we will not get audited. That's the big thing.
That you can spend it on.
We just wanna make sure we don't get audited. Yep. So we need to have somebody that's very knowledgeable and this person has already been researching a lot of the, you know, but, you know, and it's just like what McKinley said, reading that. And I've read it, you know, not all of it a hundred percent, you know. I've, I've bent almost every one of the NACO webinars on it, um, you know, and that's, and you can go back and look at any of this stuff. So whoever we get can go back and research any of this, you know, also.
I think that's a good idea.
I do too. I think it's just a good safeguard.
And Ben and I talked Friday?
Thursday or Friday.
Thursday, Friday. On, um...
Do you guys still have your TP Anderson reports?
Mm-hmm, I have them and a.
I have, or took mine alone.
Yeah, I have mine.
There was no growth of four points.
That's where, where did that too? Where did this come from?
So if you pull that open, what page?
Fifty, fifty-one.
So, uh, the past ten years revenue and expenses are all on your sheets. If you use twenty-nineteen as your base year, they're using for the ARP funding, you guys have a significant, a higher revenue generation that year than any other year comparable. Uh, I don't know why, I don't know if part of Dean's communications and power, if you guys took that loan out in twenty-nineteen and that's where that is. But if you look at, so if you look at your bottom-line revenue there, it's fourteen million something.
Fourteen-three-three-three.
Right. So then, looking at twenty-twenty, we're back down around thirteen something.
Twelve-seven-nine-two.
So if you use that fourteen-three times your four-point-one percent growth, you've lost nine-hundred thousand in revenue. So basically you can pull all of that ARP money into governor's loss.
General, your general fund.
In your general fund.
Which would be a bad thing since we had to raise the levy rate because of.
Well, there you go, and this probably is a.
I mean, it's.
But that would be, that would be a question for Jana as far as, she's got the breakdown of the revenue, how she got that fourteen million.
Where'd that number's come from?
Right, so she should be able to break that number down and, you know, if it was the loan that we took out for, for Grigger's Communications, I don't think you would count that as income or as revenue if that was a loan. But even if it was thirteen-whatever, you know, you're still, you know, maybe you can take two, three-hundred thousand and put it in your general fund versus.
Isn't this the sort of thing you want the manager person to be looking at these type deals? Appreciate Ben.
You have to have it obligated or you have to have a game plan by the end of one year.
Well, you, you, you just, no, you don't have to have a game plan yet by the end of, you just have to say, "It's not been determined yet." Until you actually have done a resolution thing to where this money's gone, all we have to do is go into that governmental website and say, "We are still in planning stage." And then quarterly, we have to go in and say what we've done.
Okay, so you don't have, I was under the impression that you.
I was too. At first, at first, that's the way it was. You had to have a game plan, but that's why I was getting nervous, that we gotta get something going. And then at the last webinar, that's when they came back and said, "If you don't have a game plan or don't have any money, you just go into the, the website wherever, and I'm sure you have all of that, where you gotta do the reporting and just say, 'We do not have anything allocated, we do not have our whatever,' I don't know for sure how we wanna word it. But I did too. I thought we had to have something by the, by the end of August. And thankfully they changed that. 'Cause, and I think they finally realized, you can't throw that much money at people and expect within three or four months to have it figured out what you're gonna, what you're gonna do with it. I mean, look at how long it's taken us just to wrap our heads around it.
Well, because there's no.
No, they don't know how to give a clear.
About the time you feel like you know what direction you should go with it, then they change something and it's like, "Well, maybe we shouldn't do that." I don't.
Yeah. Whenever you hear, go to one of those webinars, the first thing they say is, "At this time, this is what we know." It can change tomorrow.
And it usually does.
Yeah. I've read that thing and I reread it and it's just so... I consider myself a fairly intelligent person, you know.
Anything else out here?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That one didn't take long.